We now call this meeting to order. If you could please rise if you are able and pay attention to Councilman Cohen for the invocation, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please welcome Ben Friesen, Lead Pastor from Cornerstone Community Church. They are located at the corner of 21st and Yurish? Is that right? Or is it Indian Hills?
Indian Hills.
It's Indian Hills. Ben earned his Master of Divinity from Fresno Pacific Biblical Seminary and is passionate about making the Christian faith relevant to our world. He joined Cornerstone Community Church in 2017. Pastor Ben.
Sisters and brothers, let's pray. God, thank you for the chance to gather tonight as we gather in this room to discuss, to talk, to hear about issues that are important to the people in our city. We pray that you would give all of us here, especially those in front of us, our council members, our mayor, that you would give all of us, but especially them, a measure of wisdom, of guidance, that you would allow us to make good, wise decisions, decisions that are clothed in virtue, that are good, are just, are noble, are the right thing to do. As we gather and as we discuss this evening, we pray that even in those moments where there is disagreement, that you would keep in all of our minds and our hearts the things that would help us move this city forward, that would make our community a better place to live and be. So we pray for wisdom and guidance. We pray that you would help all of us here to just get a sense of what would make Topeka a better place to be. We pray this all in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move on to the presentation. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Judge Lori Bixel will give you a presentation and some sum up of the Clean Slate Day.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for letting me present to you today on our Clean Slate Day. By now, most of you are probably familiar what with Clean Slate Day is, but it's a day that allows people to come into the municipal court, actually, the Topeka Performing Arts Center, and get warrants recalled, cases disposed of. They can set up payment plans for outstanding fines and fees. If they're behind on a payment plan, they can get those reset. Other services that we provide that day include free legal advice, financial education, city services, housing and utility assistance, and then we also have Department of Revenue there to discuss their driver's license, issues with them, potentially issue a driver's license. So that's kind of a one-stop shop that we do every year. So this year, let's get to what everybody's interested in, our statistics. This year, we had almost double the attendees that we did last year. We had 852 attendees, which includes our resource fair. The total number helped in the main hall was 488, so 488 people actually saw a judge that day. Some of the people came in and they did not need to see a judge, whether that was because they just needed a payment plan reset, or they had cases that were suspending them and they really needed to talk to Driver Solutions rather than a judge first. So we had 488 come through and actually see a judge that day. I got here at 6:30 in the morning. I was not the first staff member here. We finished the last person up at about 6:30 that evening, and so staff were cleaning up and getting ready to go about 7 o'clock on Friday night. So it was an all-day event. We had 122 that went in to see about their cases that were in collections, get those payment plans reset. Department of Revenue saw 259 people, so up from 248 last year. So anybody that has driving privileges, and it's not just with City of Topeka, this could be statewide, they can sit down and get a printout that day of everything that is suspending their license and what they have to do to get that license reinstated. At the same time, they can also determine whether or not they're eligible for a restricted license. A restricted license lets them drive to and from jobs, court hearings, school, medical appointments, that type of thing, and so that's something that can check out that day. They were also able to seek legal advice. Legal advice was huge this year. We actually increased 100 from last year, so we had 213 individual defendants that saw attorneys or legal interns. We increased the number of expungements that were granted. We granted 100 expungements that day and set 20 more for hearing later on. So there was some reason that they couldn't be heard that day, whether there's a red flag that got thrown on their background, or we just didn't have enough information about the conviction itself, so it needed a little bit more research than we could do in that short setting. So we set those over. I've already started hearing a few of them. I'll hear a few more tomorrow, 3:30. We also increased the number of warrants recalled, and this is probably one of the biggest things we do this day, is you can come in, if you have an outstanding warrant, and have your warrant recalled. We will not arrest you. My arrest statistic for the last four years is zero. If you come in, we are going to get that warrant recalled and a court date set for you. So last year, we had 157 that were recalled. This year, we had 212. So that's somebody that doesn't have to worry about getting arrested at work, on the way home, on the way to pick up their kiddos, whatever it is, they were able to take care of it. We had five people come in because they knew they had missed their jail time that they needed to serve, and so they came in and took care of it. They got that jail time reset. We had a slightly fewer request for settlements this year, which is understandable. It just kind of fluctuates as to how many people want a settlement, once they realize we can't just wipe those fines away, and they'd rather get set up on a payment plan instead. We had 65 cases that were pleas and sentences, and we actually disposed of 116 cases altogether. The Topeka Municipal Court handles about 15,000 cases every year, so having 116 cases taken care of that day really does clear out some of that backlog for us. Kind of what I was talking about last time, our payment plans were up. We had 145 people come in and reset their payment plan. So those are cases that are not going to go to collections. As long as they are making a payment, then, you know, we'll work with them on it. Sometimes, they can't make that payment. They can come in and talk to a judge any day of the week and get an extension on that payment plan, but this is, again, one more day for them to do that. One area that we were down just a little bit was new court dates set. We only had 189 new court dates set, and I'll have to tell you, my dockets the next three weeks really don't bear that out because they're huge. But part of that was, is people just wanted to dispose of their case that day, so that really did help out quite a bit. So our impact, our impact this year was huge. We paid approximately $5,000 in fines, court costs, and reinstatement fees that were paid through the donated funds from Topeka Community Foundation. They gave us $5,000, and this year, what we did is we split that with Department of Revenue. Because people have expressed to us the last several years that the biggest issue for them is their driving privilege. So we gave the Department of Revenue $2,500 to help pay for restricted licenses, reinstatement fees, outstanding fines, and then the judges had the remainder for people that didn't have issues with their driver's licenses, or they may, whatever the judge felt was appropriate. So we had about half of that. And then, once we ran out of that money, we looked at what type of thing could we waive for them. One thing that we do for this event is we waive the expungement filing fee, and that's typically $100 a petition. So we waived those, and then there were other things we looked at, if we could waive something to kind of help somebody get a case paid off. We did that, so between the two judges, we waived about $11,000. So our impact on the community for this one-day event was over $16,000. So some of our success stories is we had 11 drivers that were issued a restricted license that day. So that's exactly what I talked about before, let them drive to and from school, work, doctor's appointments, so they are legally driving on the road, they can get a job that requires them to drive. We had seven more that were issued Kansas IDs because there was an issue with an address, so they couldn't get the restricted driver's license, but the ID itself lets them start that process. And with the Kansas driver's license, they can go and get other certificates they need, like a birth certificate. You have to have some sort of ID to get that. So it really helped out. Kansas Department of Revenue brought their mobile ID to us that day, so everybody who wanted to talk to him about it could. A couple other success stories that I wanted to share. We had one gentleman come in who just thought he had a warrant out. He actually had several cases that could be expunged, so he got his warrant recalled, his cases disposed of, his payment plan set, and he had nine expungements granted. So he had no idea that he had that many criminal convictions, and they were older ones, but they were still showing up on backgrounds. So when he came in just to take care of a warrant, he ended up taking care of a whole lot more that day. We had one defendant, that there was one case that was keeping him from getting a driver's license, and he just didn't have the money to pay the reinstatement fee. So I took some of that Clean Slate Day money. I paid the reinstatement fee beforehand. He could pay the rest of his fine that day, and so he walked out of there with a driver's license. We had, you know, our community's members really take this seriously, too. We had a gentleman come in, and he qualified for financial aid, and he said, you know what? Don't use the grant money on my case. There are lots of other people here that are worse off than I am. I would rather see you use the money towards them. So our community members realized what a huge impact this has, and they're willing to give up something that they were, you know, they could have been entitled to. So that's just great. And so we had amazing volunteers. We had four attorneys, five legal interns, 13 law students, eight VIPs from the Topeka Police Department, and 60 additional volunteers. So we had over 90 volunteers that day. At eight hours a day, that was 593 hours that they spent. So, you know, our impact on this is huge, and our staff did an amazing job. There were four people this year that really kind of stood out, because as you know, we normally are in the basement of T-PAC. This year, we were up on the first floor. It was a last-minute change. Monique Claudet, Denise Vaughn, Erin Cherist, and Heather Chilgrin, and Crystal Minton, all really came together kind of at the last minute to make sure that this program worked. And so they spent a whole lot of hours making sure that everybody could get this done. And so our total staff time, we spent 507 hours that day. There were 59 staff that were involved in putting this program on. So when I say it's a community-wide event, it is, but it is also a City of Topeka employee event. We had so many people there willing to help out, and you see that from the success stories. So our partners were the City Prosecutor's Office, our local attorneys, Department of Neighborhood Relations, Driver Solutions, and of course, the Topeka Community Foundation. We couldn't have done it without their grant. So our next one is September 18th, 2020. We're already planning it, so we will be ready. So, and as a reminder, we've got food for fines going this month, 10 non-perishable food items. We'll give you $25 credit for your case. I just have to plug that, so. All right. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just official, thank you so much for this report. I hope that everybody that's been watching has been as inspired as we are, just understanding the impact that a day like Clean Slate Day has in our community. This is just nothing short of amazing. Deputy Mayor.
Have a couple, three questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the warrants that are recalled, how do you track, like, the next Clean Slate Day? It's not the same individuals.
We do have a list of everybody that had a warrant recalled. This year, there were only, I believe, two that got their warrant recalled last year, didn't show up for court, and then came this year. So those two individuals had to actually come see a judge.
Okay. And how many times can they come and, like, reset their payment plans?
As long as you are making a good faith effort towards paying it, I will work with you. I hate to see people's cases go to collections. I have somebody that's been paying $5 a month for about the last 10 years, and he's almost done paying off his cases, and I won't send him to collections because he's making an effort. Our minimum is 25 a month, which is one reason we do the 10 cans for $25 credit. But as long, once they've missed several payments, then they're set on a time-to-pay docket. They have to come talk to me about what's going on. If they don't want to do that, then their case does go to collections.
Okay, and one more, legal advice. What kind of questions do they ask?
They ask everything. So it may be they want to resolve their case, and they're interested in having an attorney talk through what the consequences of a plea would be. We had a lot of people that didn't know how to fill out the petitions for expungement, so they helped them fill that out to make sure it's filled out correctly. We had people that just had questions about, this isn't a municipal court thing, but I've got a question about, you know, X, and so they were able to talk to them about it. We give out lots of referrals that day to Kansas Legal Services, the Washburn Legal Clinic. So the Kansas Bar Association has an attorney referral service, so we do a lot of referrals that day, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments for Judge?
All right.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
We now move on to the roll call.
Mayor DeLaislaw.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Jensen. Cohen.
Present. All right. That's my last one for today.
Councilmember Jensen, in a sense, yes, in the present, no, he will be here later on today. He is tied up with some business, so he will be here at some point tonight. We now move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing initiation of imminent domain proceedings to acquire easements for the reconstruction of Southwest 10th Avenue from Fairland to Wanamaker to include utility improvements for project numbers T-701015 and T-281161 Phase 2. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Brendan Jensen, granting community church an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, Section 945150 at seat concerning those prohibitions. C is minutes of the regular meeting of October 8, 2019, and there are no applications.
We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilman Cohen makes a motion, seconded by Councilman Lesser. Additional comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed. Oh, Councilwoman Ortiz.
I was asked to hand out just a map of the Tent America 2019 to everybody, so I hope you got it. The gentleman, he is part of, one of the organizers, and he wanted me to share with you guys that there's a 24-hour tent that will be going on, that they will continuously pray for you so that you can go to if you want it. And so he wanted me to invite everybody, and I told him that was a big thing because I knew that we all needed prayer, so I would make sure that I did that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or discussions with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the action items. If the clerk would read.
A is approval of tenured recommendations by the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Advisory Council in the amount of $626,000 for the 2020 Special Alcohol Fund.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, Max Wilson presented the information regarding the recommendations of the committee, and I don't know if there's anything to add at this point. Stand for questions.
Do we have any questions, or do we have a vote, a motion? Deputy Mayor.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Padilla. Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting. Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B. If the clerk would read.
B is a public hearing regarding the establishment of the Dynamic Core Redevelopment District.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As I've done in the past, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber is handling this process, and so I'll turn it over to him.
Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, thank you. So, don't want to go back too far, but I think it's important for, as the mayor always talks about, we have a viewing audience, and it's important to make sure that they have a good understanding of what's going on as well. So maybe go back just a little bit and talk about why are we here this evening. First, I would say is this, this public hearing is part of a statutory process, and we like to follow statutory processes, as we've talked about in the past. That's always a good thing to do, so we want to make sure we do that. Secondly, this, this proposed district really sprang from some conversations that were had among a large group of folks, talking about how the city could be more proactive with our economic development efforts. And the thought, at least initially, was that we could work out a downtown district and then look at districts and other areas of the city. And I know some of you have already given me ideas about where you would like to see those other districts potentially be once this process is concluded. I think it's also reasonable to talk about what is a TIF. We use a lot of acronyms, as we've talked about before. A TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing. And in a nutshell, it is an economic development tool that allows a developer to take the increment, hence the I part of the TIF, or the growth and the value of a property, and use that growth in property tax to offset certain eligible costs in their development. But I also think maybe it's important to talk about what isn't a TIF, because there's certainly a lot of confusion about that, and it's a confusing subject, and so certainly that's understood. But one thing a TIF isn't is a tax increase. One thing a TIF isn't is any tax changes at all. Another thing a TIF isn't is any changes to your property at all. So we've gotten questions about whether a TIF will change zoning, whether it will change usage, whether it will change the rights of the property. And I always like to tell people that if you were in a TIF district and didn't know it, you wouldn't know it. And that sounds a little simplistic to say, but unless you have a development project in a TIF district, you're not going to be impacted financially or otherwise. So I think that's probably important to note. We've talked about a number of pros for establishing this district. First and foremost is that we have the ability tonight to set a base, and it's important to be able to set the base for a, it's important to be able to set a base for the TIF project so that the increment, as it grows, the sooner you set the base, obviously, the lower it's going to be, or typically, the lower it's going to be, so that when you can set the base earlier, that's, that's better for a district. The second thing we've talked about in terms of pros is that we have the ability to use funds generated downtown for downtown projects, whether that's for a developer project, or we've talked about, you know, there's potential for city projects using some of these funds. For example, one of the things we've talked about is, as the Polquinsy-Viaduck project comes about, there may be a possibility to use some of these funds for right-of-way acquisition. So that's just an example of something these funds could be used for. It's a way to incentivize growth, as we've talked about, and finally, it's, it's just kind of a unique thing. We've looked across the state and frankly, kind of across the country, and there's not a lot of these pre-established districts going on. That brings us maybe to the cons. One of the cons is that this is a unique process, and as we've worked through it, we've come up with a lot of questions that have stumped staff, that have stumped our developer, that have stumped our bond counsel, but we've worked through those, and I think we've given the best answers that we can. One of the, one of the potential benefits of this project that's been touted is to be able to speed up the process for developers. I think that's a possibility, but I also want to caution that it may not, there's still going to be a rigorous project review, and, and the timeframe may ultimately end up being the same from start to finish. The district is established, and that will be helpful, but there will still be a project review process that will take time. And finally, the, the con that we've talked about substantially the last time we met about this was TIFs versus the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and how those do and don't interact with each other. So, a lot of talking. What are we here for tonight? Specifically, we're here for the governing body to have a public hearing, to open that public hearing, and once you open that public hearing and take comment from folks, staff would request that you recess the public hearing to a date certain, those are the words used in the statute, so we want to make sure we use those words, recess to a date of December 3rd. And I think when Vin skins up, he'll talk about this a little more, but they've had some very productive conversations with the school district. We want to be able to continue those conversations, and recessing to that date will allow those conversations to happen. You have the opportunity to close a public hearing, but we're, we're asking that you not do that, instead that you recess it and keep the conversation going. So with that, I will stop talking, let you open up the public hearing, and stand for any questions.
Prior to opening the public hearing, are there any questions from the council? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Doug, what's the difference between recessing and putting it on hold, I guess? I mean, why are we using the term recessing? And then, if we get to that date, I mean, is that, does that, is that what it does? Is just kind of put it on hold, so when we get to December 3rd, if we decide we need more time, then, then what happens?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Ortiz.
Team, when you're speaking, I'm getting signs from the back of the room stating that they're having a hard time listening, so if you could get closer to your microphones, I'm so sorry.
Well, I'm kind of short.
I can hear you there perfectly.
Thank you, Doug.
Councilwoman, yeah, your, your question is right on point. The reason we ask you to use those words is because that's what's in the statute, but it's saying exactly what you're saying, in that it's just putting it on hold. It's just a formality of the process. And so if you think back to the Wheatfield process, that hearing was recessed a number of times, and each time, then, it was, it was moved to another date specific to allow the conversation to continue.
I don't recall us using that term recess with the Wheatland, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Additional comments or questions before we proceed with the public hearing? Seeing none, at this point in time, we are opening the public hearing. We do have individuals that have signed up to speak previously. However, at this point in time, any individual who would like to speak up on this item, which is specifically the item pertaining to the establishment of a Dynamic Core Redevelopment District in downtown, are welcome to come after the individuals who have already signed up to speak have done so. The first person signed up to speak is Mr. Vince Fry.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, governing body. I'm Vince Fry. I'm president and CEO of Downtown Topeka Incorporated, and I'm senior vice president of the Greater Topeka Partnership. As you are well aware, our organization has worked for several months to try to establish this TIF district in downtown Topeka. We believe this type of development incentive will help unleash tremendous potential for development in downtown, and with that, we feel that a vibrant downtown certainly benefits the entire community. However, we recently became aware of concerns raised by USD 501 School Board, and we moved quickly to engage with them and to understand those concerns and seek out ways to address them, and those efforts are currently ongoing. And for that reason, DTI has asked that the council hold off on taking action on the TIF incentive tonight. This public hearing tonight is a valuable way to learn, but we want to make sure that you understand that DTI will not press forward with this initiative unless and until we are partners in education, that we've reached out and we understand the impact of the TIF district, and we are all comfortable that the vision being pursued aligns with the interests of the students at USD 501 and throughout the district that will grow up and live and work in, in Topeka. So at this point in time, that is why I am up here sharing that information with you and our engagement. and our engagement with USD 501, which we're looking forward to.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Will Pope.
I've been before you, before to talk about this issue. You know how I feel on it. It would take money away from our school district, away from Washburn University, away from the Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority, from the county, from the city, from every taxing entity that is in this jurisdiction. The city of Chicago, they have record-high violent crime. And over the weekend, they had 28 people shot. The city of Chicago, though, is going to be reducing the size of their police force by not hiring on any new people. In fact, they're going to be putting in place a hiring freeze for every city department. The city of Chicago, why aren't they raising taxes to help the problem out? Well, they're probably going to be raising taxes too, because they're in such a big budget problem right now, that they can't get out of it with merely making cuts to their budget. So, they're probably going to be cutting public safety, they're going to be increasing taxes, and the reason is, they have so many valuable properties in TIF districts right now, that one-third of their property taxes is going to TIF districts, rather than funding local government. Now, if you're not careful with this downtown TIF district proposal here in Topeka, it's very likely in the future, that could happen to us. So, if you vote to move forward on the TIF district, you could be voting to approve a cut to our police department, a cut to our fire department. You could be voting, of course, to cut our school district and every city department that we have. I would urge you, don't postpone this, end it tonight. This is not a good thing for our city. There's better ways to enhance our economy, and the best way to do that is to create fair conditions for all businesses in Topeka. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Clark Trammell.
Respectfully, thank you.
At this point in time, the public hearing is open. Any individual that wishes to speak on this item is able to do so. You have four minutes to speak. If you could please come forward, identify yourself, your name, and, and just have four minutes to provide your remarks.
My name is Jenny Stowers, and we own Dave's Auto Sales at 1434 South Kansas. I tried to get rezoning done. We own the car lot right next to it, and there's a lot right next to it. I actually got turned down. That lot there was zoned as residential. Our lot next to it was, is actually a commercial lot. There is no other property zoning there. My dad went to, I went to the NIA meeting before. My dad went there last month, and the mayor told my dad that he would get back with him because our goal is, my goal was there, was to add a building and a detail shop, because I wanted to hire people that's come out of incarceration, so it would help the city to have jobs for them. I got turned down from the city for my zoning, because they said that, it's, we're a car dealer shop. Yeah, what happened was, they said that they combined it, but I can never turn that car lot back into a car lot if, if that building was.
Ma'am, is this pertaining this TIF district?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
I'm just, I'm looking for it.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is. It's because of the zoning and the development in that area. And so, he, they came there last week, last month. We're at that area, and the problem of it is, the south side there, we're all, we're all wanting that south side to develop. And so, I think it's a good thing that the city is trying to develop that area, but I also think that we all should come together to work as a team and listen to everybody that we need to develop the whole thing, not just, not just, not just point out certain businesses. I mean, we're a car dealer. So, the next person might be a different business, though we should all, it doesn't matter what kind of business that we are. It should be all equal together, because our thing is that we want, we want the city of Topeka to grow, and we want the downtown to grow. And we think the city is making a great avenue, but we stop at 10th Street. We're further down on the, down, so we need that area to grow, and we want that area to look nice, too. That's what I want to say. And so, when we submit our thing, we expect the mayor of them to respond to us, so we can make the south side look better, too.
City Manager?
Yeah, yeah. Because, I mean, that kind of makes the whole development area look nice.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, thank you very much, City Manager. I was trying to figure out, I don't remember, but it makes sense. Anybody else that would like to speak to this item?
I have a business in the industrial park down by the, on the south side of the Kansas River, Lardner Cutstone. And I have a few questions that I haven't seen that have been answered, and these are kind of in random order. One of the things, when you were talking before, that came up to my mind was, can TIF funds be used for buying, say, a lot comes open, can TIF funds be used for that, to put it into a land bank? Because I know land bank was mentioned in the market study. The next question I had was the NRP versus the TIF districts. Right now, I had a building we built about five years ago, and we were able to get rebate on our taxes. Does the TIF district in any way encroach on that? Will it stay the same? Will my rebate continue? Or if I add on another time, do I have the opportunity to still get rebate on my taxes? Because we've talked about expanding our building some, and that hasn't been mentioned. My next question was, you talk about the TIF fund, funding infrastructure. Our roads in our neighborhood are not great. There is one section that is great, because it was just replaced due to a new water line. But if the TIF district goes into effect, will it affect projects in the city that are funded by the street sales tax program that is ongoing? Because frankly, we desperately need some repairs down in the industrial park. I'm a little concerned about having such a large area put in this TIF district, especially when no specific projects have been outlined or even alluded to. I hate to, and I know part of it, it applies to that base amount. It will affect how much taxes go into the TIF funds versus what stays and goes to the school district, the city, everyone else who gets mill-loving money. So, is it not more prudent to start with an area you know you are going to do something in the near future, and then add on as other projects look to be coming? I know you want to encourage developers, but isn't there a core area that you really want to see the most happen with now? And know that you can.
You still have a minute, ma'am.
Know that you can get that done, and then you can build on it. It just seems like it's such a large area and affects so many people and so many businesses, so many homes, that I would rather see you be more prudent in what you start with and then work your way up as time passes. And then you would have less effect on things like the 501 budget and their mill levy. And that covers what I wanted to know.
Thank you for your comments.
And if I can get any answers, I'd appreciate it, too.
Anybody else interested in speaking on this item? Anybody else? Oh, yes.
I didn't prepare anything, but my name is Sandra Penner, and I own six lots with, within the development area. And my concern is with the residents of the area. I really don't want to see it come down to, as it did with Water Tower Place, where people are forced out of their homes for a low property value, which is partially because there hasn't been any redevelopment in our area for years. I've been here for over 30 years. Originally, it was on hold for Water Tower Place, which I think is part of this. It just hasn't been mentioned. And so, my concern is that we're all taxpayers, that the residents have some kind of legal representation from the city if this goes forward. Because part of the reason our property values are low is because nothing's been repaired. Over 10 years ago, I was told that we would get new curbs and new sidewalks in our neighborhood, which we never have. The crime rate is what the city really needs to concentrate on, and I guess that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, sir, come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Clay Sherwood, I have the property at 422 Southwest 6, oldest stone building in downtown Topeka, blah, blah, blah. In reading the resolutions and starting to dwell into everything that's there, the one thing that really stuck out in my mind was the intimate domain. If this resolution is adopted without any layers put in there on what needs to happen within this core district, you guys have a complete open door to do whatever you want with intimate domain. I would like to see if you do move forward with it, that we see a level that, how do I explain this? That you are able to set goals, or not goals, levels of what it's going to be, that you're going to intimate domain, or what you're not going to intimate domain. A clear explanation is, is that is somebody going to be able to buy one lot on a block and take out that whole block? Or is there a certain amount of property that needs to be owned before they can intimate domain? So, if they're down to one house that they need on that, or one property in that, in that block, you know, then the intimate domain. But I want to see those levels within it and thinking about the businesses that have been down here supporting this core district for many, many years. I've been on that corner since 1994. I've cleaned it up. I ran the prostitutes off. I did everything I can to try to make that property a good property when nobody cared about downtown Topeka, and now we're going to have developers coming in. I just want levels set that protect us as the local business owners. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Additional questions or comments on this item? Additional questions or comments on this item? This is your last opportunity to speak up on this item. That being said, the public, I'm sorry? Oh, yes.
Sorry for being late to the party. My name is Robert Cunningham. I live here in the district. I'm interested in buying the land that is just north of my house in the district as well, which is what brought me to this meeting. I don't have much knowledge about the issue at hand, however, I would like to see it done with as much hope, as much help for the property owners as well, be it business or not. Keeping them in, in mind would be great. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, so, is there anybody else signed up that is interested in speaking on this item? Anybody that's interested in speaking on this item? Anybody else interested in speaking on this item? Okay, now officially, the public hearing is closed.
No.
Oh, it's, it's, oh, it's recessed. Sorry for December 3rd.
I'm thinking to make a motion.
Okay, so at this point in time, yes, Councilwoman Heller.
Mayor, I move that this hearing be recessed. I move that this hearing be recessed until December the 3rd.
So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Heller, a second by Councilwoman Emerson. Additional comments or questions before we recess this hearing? Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. If I understood the comments, and I, I do appreciate the comments that people came up and gave tonight, but it seemed to me like the recurring theme was, right now, there's existing commercial or industrial businesses in the area that are maybe not, you know, the shiny things that, you know, they're not, you know, they're not tourist-type things, and that by going to this TIF area might somehow make it harder in the future for those businesses to expand. And I, I don't maybe expect an answer right now, but I, I think that's what we're hearing, maybe. And I, I don't like, in the case like Lardner Stone, if you guys have been down there, that's just a fantastic, it is just amazing facility they have down there with these huge, huge saw blades that must be seven or eight foot in diameter, and they've been there for, I don't know, so for 100 years or more, maybe?
I think 37.
Okay.
I believe it's because they look to pick out an image.
Thank you. So, it would be, you know, incredible hardship, so I, I guess I'm hearing that loud and clear, and I'd hope we take that into consideration.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. This is my district, all of it, both the south part, where, where the residences are near Monroe and Kansas Avenue, as well as all the way up to the river. There really weren't any, and I'm not saying there should have been, but there hasn't been any formal effort to reach out to any of you, whether you're here or on TV, for more public information about what's happening with the Polquense Viaduct, with the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. Clay asked about eminent domain, there could be more conversation about that. If people would like to have a meeting anytime, but particularly between now and December the 3rd, let me know, and we can sure get that taken care of. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Jensen, yes.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for being late. When you fix technology for a living, sometimes it doesn't always cooperate, so the job we were supposed to do at 8:00 this morning convinced at 4:00 PM, and now here I am. Mr. City Manager, we do a pretty good job of putting frequently asked questions for various projects and topics on our website. Is, would it be possible to do something like that with the questions that were answered this evening, as well as some of the other things that we've been discussing, then we could push out to make sure that everybody's operating off of one set of facts?
Yes, I believe we can.
Excellent, thank you so much.
It's not, it's not difficult. Many of these things are known and can be answered. I won't take the time now, we'll put them together and put them out there, but many of these questions can be answered pretty easily, based on past experience and.
That'd be wonderful, but then we could just push them out for constituents that have questions. Thank you so much.
We'll do so.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting. On recessing to December 3rd this hearing.
That was a prompt. Oh, thank you.
All right. She's got to redo it, because I couldn't wait.
And now we play the Jeopardy song. Just so that you know, in your absence, Councilman Cohen honored you.
Oh, dear. I appreciate that, sir. We have to have one present per meeting. Had a lot of laps.
Good, good. I'll go back and watch the day.
For those of you watching, we're trying to get the board to cooperate at this point in time. It seems that. City Manager? Should we do like a two, three-minute recess? Yeah, let me know, and then we can do a hand raise. Yeah, let me know, and then we can do a hand raise. We're going to have a five-minute recess, and then we'll proceed with the council meeting.